Michael, can you hear me?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay. So, welcome to the March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two work session to receive presentations of retail liquor license applicants. Today we'll hear from in these, in this order, Aces Range LLC, Big D Oil Number Fifty-Six, Billy Jack's Pizza Pub, Get Bent LLC, Ike's Bar and Grill, and the Old Cheyenne Elevator. Presentations we lift limited to fifteen minutes. And then a second work, work session for presentations will be on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at six P M. At this location, Lemmy County School District Number One Boardroom. It will be available for viewing electronically. The meeting is open to the public, however, no public comment will be taken. Public comment on the new retail liquor license will be taken at the following upcoming meetings. Public hearing at the, a public hearing at the city council meeting on Monday, April eleventh at six P M. Committee, the whole meeting on Wednesday, April twentieth at six P M. And the city council meeting on Monday, April twenty-fifth at six P M. Guess we'll start, we have fifteen minutes, so Aces, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the Cheyenne City Council. My name is Jay Brent Coons. I go by J B. I'm the general manager and developer of Aces Range LLC. Aces Range is a state-of-the-art concept. Where we're going to bring in golf and shooting simulators that will be best-in-class for Southeast Wyoming and compete with anything in the front range. We are a family-friendly business. And we will help keep Cheyenne business in Cheyenne. It's a solid family entertainment and we're really excited to be here. I've spent eight years working in the service industry, some of which at restaurants and bars, others were more recently at Prairie View Golf Course, where I developed a passion for the game and hence this business and why I'm here today. The combination of experience has qualified me for what I believe is necessary to see this business, business succeed in downtown Cheyenne. I'll briefly go over four topics this evening. What is Aces Range? Why is it necessary that we have a retail liquor license? What is unique and beneficial about this business concept? And what is our timeline for opening our doors? So we have purchased a building on Fifteenth and Pioneer. It's an industrial warehouse at the moment and we are going to convert it to an active business. It is a growing trend to have a simulation business like this, particularly for colder climates where our golfing season is showed so short. We're going to feature Trackman Golf Simulators. They are state-of-the-art. They feature over a hundred and twenty golf courses worldwide. They are renowned and used by the professional golfers as the simulators in their homes and what they practice on. Now, not only feature just golf modes, they offer a driving range experience as well as a target game that is similar to Topgolf. And we are going to put six of them in downtown Cheyenne. Smokeless Range is a shooting simulator that utilizes a camera and a laser beam fired from a lifelike firearm onto a projector screen. And the applications over the software are limitless. Currently, they have zombies, quick draw shooting, obstacle courses, hostage scenarios. And the software is just getting better and better. We are really excited to feature them. I think it's going to be quite the addition for downtown Cheyenne. Shooters will not have to waste their ammunition. They can come in and just use our laser bullet and they will save money on ammunition. And not to mention it offers a much more in-depth experience, being that the targets are moving and different scenarios that the software allows that you wouldn't get in a traditional shooting range. So you might ask, why is it necessary that we have this retail license? We spoke with several people, professionals in this field. And Wyoming State Statute twelve dash one dash one oh one states that we need to have this full retail license as we do not qualify as a golf course, nor as a club. What is unique and ben- beneficial about this business concept? Is that we are going to run leagues year-round, which will guarantee patrons in the downtown area competing. And tournaments as well that we plan on hosting that will coincide with frontier days and multiple other different events. For example, I plan on doing a masters tournament, a Cheyenne tournament, things like that, which will guarantee that we bring out patrons to the downtown area. I've already spoke with several businesses around the downtown area and they are all excited. We are going to work together. I plan on offering different promotions with them and, and working to to launch a media campaign that will bring people out and get people excited about these tournaments and these league nights because we will offer prizes and promotions with these other businesses. We're really excited to be moving forward with this concept. The esports sector is going to evolve. What we're riding, we're riding the technological curve that goes with this, that the software is just going to keep getting better and better. And that is what we are all about. We think that it's a great family entertainment for all ages. And we we would like to ride that curve. I think it's an important thing for the city of Cheyenne. Golf is at a record high. It's never been more popular. I have noticed it in my time at Prairie View. Like I said, I've worked there for two years under Mike LaFleur and Dave Hackola. And it's just taken off. The popularity is something to do and gets people out of the house. And this will enable them to play year-round. I have also spoken with the coaches of the high school teams and they are just ecstatic to have this opportunity. I am very proud to say that we are going to work with these teams and we're going to reserve time for the high school teams to use these simulators, something kind of like an open gym where they're going to come in. And it will not only be beneficial to have the sims to teach them how to swing as it gives them exact numbers and data on exactly what they're doing. They will also have video reference to adapt their swing and perhaps compare their swing to a professional swing. And it will help them to grow as golfers and produce, will produce much better golfers and more interested golfers. I think it's a, a very good opportunity for these young people. And we're really excited to, to offer that to them. We believe that our entertainment does target all ages and that we are a family business. That being said, we do think that serving libations on league nights or on tournament days would be beneficial to our business. We are using a point-of-sale system that is state-of-the-art. It is very very good at collecting data and we plan on running promotions through this point-of-sale system where they bring us a Q R code or we send out an email for when they give their business to other local businesses downtown. We will do something for our patrons who can present Q R codes that will increase the business in the downtown area. We plan on not having a full kitchen. Like I said, this is a family-oriented business. We don't want to be another restaurant, bar, or grill. We would like to use, utilize all of our space for simulators. And we have done that so far in our layout of our building. We're not putting in a full kitchen. We do not want to prepare food. Instead, we are going to reach out and already have to all the restaurants to, in downtown. And we are going to pick up their food and bring it to our patrons in our building and let them, they will have it in their bays. We'll deliver it to the patrons in the bays. And we're really excited. I mean, it's going to be a cool concept. You could get a prime rib from the Albany and sushi and a coffee all in one drink or all in one and just waiting for you in your bay.
We plan on serving responsibly. I personally have had two stings in my career in the service industry. One at Prairie View Golf Course, the other was at Cheyenne and downtown Denver. I plan on teaching my employees the exact methods that I use. We would like to comply with all regulations that go with any of those licenses serving all the downtown area. We're going to have quite the economic impact on the downtown area. If we fill our leagues like we are planning to do, we are going to have quite a few orders that are going to be going out to these restaurants. It's going to be quite a tie for everybody to rise on. We will bring a lot of business to all the other restaurants. And not to mention just getting the the patronage and getting the business downtown, getting people downtown and excited about being there and having other opportunities to go out perhaps after our league nights or a tournament. We are really excited to work with Freedom's Edge and the other businesses on Fifteenth and Pioneer, just in our region. It's, it's a really great area. We're excited and plans that are being discussed about the Renaissance of Fifteenth Street. We feel that we are a gateway from Fifteenth Street to Pioneer and kind of the west edge. We'll be able to, we have two garage doors as seen in our renderings here. We plan on having them opening in the summer months where weather is permissible. And we are going to be somewhat of a gateway for downtown connecting the depot and all the activities down there to the west edge. We have a specific timeline. We're hoping to be open in October, ending everything with supply chain and current situation with the global economy. We are excited to have I S C builders and Ian and Scott Kelly are our general contractors. We own our Trackman simulators. They're ready to go in. They are last-minute loads after all our renovations are done. We are shovel-ready and committed to doing this project. I'm passionate about this game and I'm really excited to share this passion with the city of Cheyenne.
Good evening. Mayor Collins, city council members, President Royal Vice, President Johnson. My name is April Burma Coons. I am so excited about Aces Range. I am a co-owner of Aces Range. We are going to provide grassroots economic development for the city of Cheyenne on the Fifteenth Street Renaissance. We're proud to be participants in it. You've already heard the description of what we're going to do, why it's going to be fun, why it's going to be enjoyable. And a vacant warehouse is going to be rehab, renovated, and turned into a really fun experience for many Cheyenne residents. There's been discussion, and I have heard about it several times, about the antiquated liquor law licenses in the state of Wyoming. They are obviously hindering economic development as witnessed by the rest of the people who have applied for this old liquor license. The reason our license has to be this particular one, can't be a social entertainment one or a golf club. We can't comply with the regulations under statute twelve one dash one oh one under section eight, Roman Act Three, D, a golf club having more than fifty bona fide members and owning, maintaining, or operating a bona fide golf course together with a clubhouse. Obviously, we can't do that. The one that I've heard the most about is the social club. The problem with the social club is that in the statutes and is on your own application, you are bound to be a five oh one C three nonprofit. We are not. We are for-profit business. This is small business at its best. So that is the reason. Only this license would entitle us to serve libations during league time and other times when we have patrons in the establishment. It's really an important thing for us. And we hope that you will give us due consideration, realizing that under the antiquated statutes, this is the only liquor license we've been applied for. Thank you for all of the hard work that you do. It's very difficult, but you are the grassroots of political action within the city of Cheyenne. And I thank you for the hard work. I know it's nice.
Any questions from committee? Mr. Johnson?
I'll lead and so I just wrote five and I'll ask this of everybody. So I guess whoever wants to be the spokesperson for this, how would you use the catering part of the license?
So we plan to work with the food trucks, like I said, get a schedule. Food trucks outside and the options of the restaurant stuff.
One of the issues, things you can do with the retail liquor license is cater alcohol functions. I think that's more what the question is.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I didn't mean like food catering. Yeah, like exactly as he stated, like, sorry. I was assuming that you on this part of the license that you would know. So it does offer you the opportunity to actually serve at remote locations where outside of, you know, your normal purview of what you would do. And this only comes with the full retail liquor license. That if there was to be events where they would ask you to come cater. What's happened to me in the past is when these full retail liquor licenses are generated, is that a lot of the staff actually isn't qualified to deal with catering. They can all, they're used to their tips training and stuff in-house. But when you actually are catering an event, like say a nonprofit or just, you know, a neighborhood night out type of thing, that a lot of the staff doesn't come with the qualifications to actually feel comfortable outside of their realm to actually work in those other facilities. So that's why I was asking, as far as the retail liquor catering, how would you intend to use that?
We could set up something like that. We are potentially looking at growth through the city. If the demand is there for other locations, we are looking into that. And Trackmans themselves, we could potentially move if we were to cater an event. If they requested it of us, we could, it's basically an iPad, the very state-of-the-art, but it is small, like the technology that we have today. So if we were to cater, I would be certified. I was planning on taking the three hundred and sixty-degree training or full certification as a restaurant owner, caterer. I'm not going to be overqualified, I feel, as, as an owner, just because it may be out of our depth and scope. But I would like to know what I'm doing as far as the tips training goes to be certified for that.
And then my second question is, how much alcohol do you intend to sell annually?
Looking at the numbers, it's going to be quite a bit as far as gangs go or is there a specific?
So typically, when you go through the Wyoming Beverage Commission, I know that they, forgive me. Jumping to you, remember if it's one thousand dollars a month. Okay, so typically you have a, an amount threshold that has to be met under this type of license to actually operate it on the amount of alcohol that you're going to sell. So with this full retail liquor license, because like April had stated earlier that it didn't really qualify for the golf or the social clubs on this, though, do you principally see that you would be more of like taps? Or do you see that you're going to do more of a cocktail lounge in regards to?
No, sir. I plan on running cakes and simple beer list that I'm on. I think our volume will definitely satisfy that requirement. I think that we are going to go through classes especially during frontier days. My plans, I have a seasonal space that I'm really looking forward to using. That we are going to really bring people out and take care of this line, those pass-through orders. There's lots of different applications that we can accomplish meeting that requirement. I think we will bring people out to sell enough.
So you had brought it up in your presentation, it's kind of a subtext to this last question. So had you worked with Freedom's Edge to the north of talking about knocking down that wall between your adjacent properties? Since you're going to principally sell just more beer than say cocktail liquors that you could actually join in a corporation? If that was what you were intending to do since they already have a brewery license?
Our, our business, the founding business, we would like to keep it in contact with partners and outside partners.
Any further questions?
Yeah, sorry, I'm typing my answers as well. Okay, and then so third question is, will your employees have health insurance slash 401 K benefits?
We're still finalizing that. I plan on definitely taking care of my employees. The force is right now, it's very difficult to find whatever you're looking for. So when we can find good employees, I plan on.
And then how many employees do you intend to have?
We will probably have six to ten by the time we're up.
And then my last question is, what will your hours of operation be?
So I'm planning on being very flexible in that aspect. We're planning on going from ten to say nine P M. However, I am completely open to looking the seventeen buildings for past that time if it is requested. Especially for things like parties and birthdays and things like that. If it is requested that we'll stay later when permissible.
Mr. President, I have two questions. So to clarify on your hours of operation, on the application you had indicated Monday through Sunday, ten A M. To nine P M. So you're planning on seven days a week? And then my second question was, and you addressed this somewhat in page two of your letter with regards to the competition. There's already a a bar and grill that offers golf simulation. I think there's, with two simulators, I think there's a private club that has four. And you're right, to my knowledge, I don't know anyone that does the, the three shooting simulators. Have you done the research to, to show that six? Because I see from the diagrams, six golf bays. Are you confident you can keep those going in a, in a busy fashion?
I think, yeah, I think we're going to be booked. I really do. The golf community is really, really looking forward to this. It is just really, it's brutal trying to perfect something we can't do every day. And that's one of the big things with this game. It's, I mean, our attempt to perfect it. It's very difficult. It's the most difficult sport there is. Most athletes would say that golf is the hardest sport to play, to be consistent. And that is what we're hoping to achieve. As far as the other simulation days in town, they normally, we're not going to do the same thing. It's that we're going to offer a lot more with our building, having six in the same spot. We're going to do a lot more fun things with leagues and things like that in tournaments. It will be mostly about that and not just a restaurant where you occasionally play golf. It's going to be, you're there for golf or two, two sims. And that's going to be the purpose of the establishment.
Any further questions from committee?
Mr. President?
Mr. Seagrim.
Just one quick question. I've been reading your plan again. It looks like you would like to open in September, October. So if you were, if you were to receive the license, you would have no problem? If there was a caveat on it that you'd be open by the end of the year or it would revert to the city?
Yes.
Okay. In the past, we've had some instances where we've granted licenses and they've, it's been a year, eighteen months before they ever get open. And they're trying to avoid that if possible.
Our engineers right now are getting up for our design team and our so I don't, this is not being a problem if we have to do without certain.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. J B. J B. I do agree that, and I love the concept, especially with our winter months, like, you know, David, been a great day to be on a simulator. Usually they're around forty dollars an hour. And in the summers, when you would be competing with Prairie View Airport Golf Course, we can golf those for around twenty-four dollars for eighteen holes, depending on what type of membership you have. How do you see yourself being competitive with that in the summer months?
What we're going to do is we'll have promotions to get people out. We'll roller rates and we'll do different things and run promotions for food or drinks to get people out. We'll have prizes that will draw people out as well. We can do a lot of different things with the businesses downtown. I think that will really kind of bring it out and goes back to the point-of-sale system. We're going to get birthdays, names, and information about our customers that we could say, okay, well, it's your birthday. Well, we're entitled to come out to Aces Range and we'll give you a bay for a pre-hour, two hours. We'll do things like that. Also, the courses are overflowing. A lot of our golfers are going to Kimball, Nebraska, and Colorado, places like that because the golf courses are so busy. I think we'll cater to that overflow. Instead of going to Prairie View and playing around that takes three hours, you can come to our sim and play eighteen on Little Beach. It's a good change-up. Not only that, the data provided by the Trackman simulators is state-of-the-art. It really is the best way to alter your swing and see what you are doing without having a professional coach there. I think that aspect of it alone is its own draw. It should be a main focus for many people. It really will teach you what you're doing wrong, how to correct it. And it's just a very unique tool. I'm really excited for the kids. I think it's going to be a big deal for that to be able to utilize these sensors.
Yeah, just a, not really a question, but a final comment. It goes out to everybody and it's just within the confines of what we're restricted with here. That the city and my colleagues are going to try and do everything within our power to make everybody successful. And that's our goal. When we had our goal session, we were talking about economic development. Yeah, we're going to do everything we can. And I love the concept and, and I know you'll be successful.
Any further questions from committee?
Any further questions from committee?
Mister President. So in listening to your presentation, you've already secured your building. You've already purchased your simulators and you said they're pretty much ready to go. So you're doing that all of this without any guarantee or knowing whether you'd get a retail license or not. So, I mean, what was the business plan? If you didn't get the licenses, everything come to a grinding halt? Do you sell the simulators or are you planning on continuing?
I'm fourth generation. I, I grew up here. I know what it's like growing up here. And, and I, I think it's a great thing for, for people that we have to find an alternate route to go. Uh, it'd be unfortunate and it'd set our business back quite a bit. Uh, but we are committed to, to Cheyenne. It's, it's our home. Our pride to be here. We're not gonna go somewhere else just because, you know, their way.
Thank you, Mister President.
Any further questions from committee for Ace's? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, April.
President Roybal.
Michelle did have some.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just had a quick question. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight, um, to the Coons family. But I did have a question as to whether you've given any thought to what the starting wage will be for your employees.
So how it's gonna work? I was thinking about twenty dollars an hour and then they will also get tips, uh, which should put them in a very respectable. Pretty significant pay. Uh, you're talking forty dollars an hour for the sims and if they order food, the bill's gonna get up to sixty, seventy dollars. Potentially for one hour, uh, so assuming that works, it's fourteen dollar tip at twenty percent. And it's, I, I think it's a substantial amount of money, not to mention the amount of money to use it as far as employees. Uh, as far as having employee nights and letting them use the sims, uh, it will be a big draw. I do wanna bring in some people who, uh, play golf, are familiar with it. And I think it will be a, a draw for them to be able to use the sims, uh, and especially if it's not busy, then we'll have them, um, in the sims and then, and also, uh, we're, like I said, we're gonna do like employee, uh, team building experiences where it's just us. Then we're gonna be in the sims, uh, playing. So I think it will be a great opportunity for, uh, anybody who would like to come and work for us.
Uh, Charles Ridge, do you have any further questions?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So how do you rephrase that instead of how much you talk about? Cause how much alcohol are you intent to sell annually? Cause what would you say, what is your? What do you think your gross market not with alcohol?
Okay, we got Big D Oil, number fifty-six up next. And if you, uh, on the microphones, you can get a little bit closer to them so that the, uh, our audience can hear.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me. I'm gonna sit down so I can work my mouse here. Anyway, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Clyde Mead. I'm the regional manager for Big D Oil. Uh, I've lived in Wyoming for forty years, been to Cheyenne for most of that. Have, have to say, I just love our weather that we have, this balmy weather. I, um, I, I, I love the outdoors that we have in this, in this area. I, I went ice fishing. I went, I, I had to give up ice fishing though. Took too much work to get my, my boat in the water, so we, we kinda gave up that. I wanna start out by talking a little bit about Big D Oil. Uh, it was founded in nineteen sixty-three, been around quite a few years. We're going strong. When I first came to Cheyenne, I had five stores that I watched over. I have eighteen in this area with Laramie and nine here in Cheyenne and a few down in Colorado. So we're, we're growing strong. So Big D Oil is financially stable. Uh, last year, we had ninety-five point seven billion dollars in sales. Also, by talking a little bit about the convenience store industry, cause I think a lot of people think of the convenience store. There's this little thing down on the corner that if you might need to go to or need something, you stop in real quick. But however, there's a hundred and fifty thousand convenience stores in the United States. And it does five hundred and fifty billion dollars in revenue. It's one of the largest retail, retail establishments as a group. Convenience store business is very busy and very constant, even during the pandemic, we're very steady. In twenty seventeen alone, the total value of malt beverage and beer sales through the convenience stores reached twenty-one point two billion. And another one point two, three billion in craft brews. Uh, many convenience stores have hundreds of customers per day. Our Big D Station on Greeley Highway in Cheyenne with a liquor store averages a thousand customers a day. And the one that's going to be on, uh, we're building, it's almost complete. We'll probably have this opened up. Oh, hopefully in two or three weeks, um, out there on Whitney, uh, Whitney Road, on the east end of Lincoln Way. It should do exactly really close to those same numbers, if not better, that we have the same offerings, um, in that facility. With all the, you know, Chester's Chicken and fuel and food. Big D contributes to Cheyenne with nine convenience stores in the city. We employ over sixty individuals that work and live in our area, contributing to the financial health of Cheyenne. Not to mention the vendors and repair service companies that we help support by using their services. I talked a little bit about convenience stores are an essential business. Homeland Security recognized the convenience store industry as critical, essential workforce, workforce during the COVID pandemic. Homeland Security recognized the convenience stores as essential due to providing food, beverages, liquor and fuel to Cheyenne residents. And during that pandemic, we had our shields on, our masks, we practiced social distancing, did everything, um, that the health department and the government expected us to do. Uh, being for fuel, grocery items or a needed restroom stop, we were there to provide services to the people of Cheyenne. Now here's a picture of a Wyoming rest stop. Uh, building and maintaining a statewide system of rest. At current construction and material prices, the cost can be three point five million each. Multiplied out by thirty-seven rest stops in Wyoming, it was over a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars of taxpayer's money that took to build those facilities and another hundred or two point five million a year to maintain them. Why is this important to my presentation? Because the convenience store operators help provide the same service every day to the public at the operator's expense. This is a large expense to convenience store operators, but it draws customer service sites, which in return create sales, including liquor sales. Up there on the screen, I have, one mentioned the snowstorm. Kind of interesting about convenience stores. Remember last year in March fourteen and fifteen, it started to snow. And then it snowed and it snowed and it snowed till it was, uh, over thirty inches on our level. The schools shut down, businesses shut down. This included both Walmarts in town. We were open. The Big D employees dug their way out their front doors and walked to work. Our customers did the same because we were open. Our liquor store on Greeley Highway in Cheyenne was very full of customers. It was in full swing. People were so glad that we were there and we were open because they couldn't do anything else. They couldn't even drive their cars. They could watch football and come and get the drinks that they wanted and we were there for them. We're open three hundred and sixty-four days a year, whether it's a holiday or bad weather, we're there for our customers. Talking about our new location out here on Whitney Road, we have invested millions of dollars in this new site. From the getting the permits to where we're at on the facility right now, it's going to be awesome. This convenient location will serve a growing area of the Cheyenne population and it will save them time and money. Big D will continue to grow in Cheyenne and add more value to its residents and to the Cheyenne pockets. Big D has been a business for fifty-nine years and plans on being a business for a long time. It is a family owned company and the dad handed it over to the son and the son, and the son's got five or six children of his own. And I believe it's gonna be Big D Oil for a long, long time. Uh, we offer a large variety with competitive pricing. We've actually had customers bank us for the retails that we have on our products inside our stores. I wanna talk about our equipment and our people. Our company currently operates eighteen liquor stores. This is not our first rodeo or something we're trying to get into. We have eighteen liquor stores already operating and forty-three other stores that operate with controlling restricted products, such as tobacco and other things. We are successfully protecting our youth by not selling to the underage. We do this by tips training our cashiers. Now, tips training is recognized by the state for responsible alcohol training and certification. Our tips trained cashiers know when to spot, on the spot, and when they should decline a sale, be it underage or intoxication. Our registers, our, our equipment itself that the cashier uses, our registers require that a customer's I D be scanned to complete the sale. This eliminates underage sales to protect our youth. We do not just rely on cashier's visual check or opinion. A little bit more about that. It's, it's not like somebody can even override that. That, that equipment will not let even a cashier try to cheat on it because it will not complete the sale unless it's a legitimate I D. So we've been very successful with controlling those issues with tobacco and cigarettes for several, several years. Okay, why we think would be a great choice was a retail liquor license. Number one, we're financially stable. It's branched with a proven track record, competitive pricing that our customers literally bank us for. Uh, our facilities provide many customer services. And, uh, open for any questions that you might have or?
Any comments or questions from committee?
Yes, sir, when you're ready.
Mister Johnson.
Okay, so since you actually have experience in this, since you guys already have one of the full retail liquor licenses at your other location. Did you guys ever use your remote catering as part of your license?
No, everything is sold inside the store.
Okay, and then because you have experience in this, what was, um, the actual, um, alcohol sales that was done at the South Greeley store? Cause would you can make a comparison that it's probably gonna be about the same for what you sold at South Greeley to Whitney Road? As far as alcohol sales exclusively for that location?
It would be the same or even better. Cause of the location, there's a lot of houses tops, the town is growing like leaps and bounds out there towards Whitney, uh, Whitney and Winchester and, and all the way north, all the way out. It's just, we're, we'll be the first stop in off I eighty, coming off of, coming from, uh, the East Town, Burns and Scott. Anywhere coming east, if they get off that highway thirty, cause we're on the high, the state highway, right on the intersection of, all the subdivisions and everything that are going there, plus we'll be right on that. They're putting a new light in there to handle the traffic. And, uh, if you've been out there, you'll see there's a flashing light, temporary light there right now, but there'll be an actual stoplight on our corner. To help, you know, control the traffic and, cause even the city projects, the traffic projects us to do very well there. They thought they'd need a traffic light before, took us two years about to get the permit. To get, uh, I think all those things set up and we're ready to go and, but yeah, it, it should be ver, should do very well.
Do you know how much you made in alcohol sales at the South Greeley location?
In a year or in a week?
Let's go annually.
That's that?
Annually.
Annually?
Yes.
No, not exactly. I know about what we're doing. We could add to the math, but maybe around three hundred thousand.
Okay, we'll do a week, cause just for sake of argument, how much do you do in a week?
I, I would love to get you those numbers. I can, I can respond back, but I don't wanna take a wild guess at it.
And then, so in regards to my third question, same as the last one, um, do your current employees have health insurance and 401K benefit?
Yes, we offer that. We pay part of it. Definitely. And hey, there's dental option and, um, insurance, 401K. We even pay part of the 401K. We match part of their, they put in. Medical, family, single, I mean, it's taken, it, it covered everything. And it's Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Wyoming and South Dakota insurance. Very good.
And then how many employees do you intend to have at the new location?
At the new location, between twelve and fifteen.
And all of them are gonna be tips certified?
The ones that will, definitely everyone that'll be running the register. Now, the person that's maybe cooking Chester's Chicken or making hamburgers may not be, but the one, anybody that's on the register will be tips trained.
At your point of sale, okay.
Yeah, at the point of sale. It has its own, it'll have its own room. And, uh, on register will be operated by somebody that's tips trained.
That's all I had, Scott.
Okay, any further questions from committee?
Yeah, Mister President, do you? Didn't read it here somewhere. You had eighteen, um, businesses already that are, have liquor permits?
Yes, in Wyoming and South Dakota.
In Wyoming, okay, that, that was my second question, that somewhere in South Dakota. Uh, have you ever sold back any of those to anybody else?
No, we, we're moving forward. We, like I said, uh, I had twenty-five stores and I started working for Big D Oil twenty years ago. Where we have forty-three operating stores and I oversee eighteen of those. I remember when I ca, first came to Cheyenne, I had five, but we've expanded to nine just in town, four in Laramie and, uh, five in Colorado, just in northern Colorado, for Collins Greeley.
Any further questions? Doctor Aldridge, do you have a hand up?
I do not. I, it, their information that I was going to ask is in their documents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further questions? Sir, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Just want to say we really, we think it's great for everybody, the opportunity that the census got us an opportunity for another license in town. And, you know, we've, we've been wanting and needing one of these. Our customers are asking us to, you know, if we're gonna have liquor shops. to, you know, if we're gonna have liquor shops in the store and all we say is cross our fingers and hope so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we have Billy Jack's Pizza Pub next. Gentlemen, be prepared to sit or stand. It's up to you. And please just make sure you get closer to the mic, okay?
Whenever you're ready. So our CEO, Bill Winberg is, is on, but he's having troubles with the, the Zoom, so he's unable to speak. So we've got some notes from him as well as what we can add for ourselves. So first off, we are Billy Jack's Pizza Pub, we are out of Carney, Nebraska. The Billy Jack's Pizza Pub is the brainchild of our CEO, Bill Winberg. He, he, as well as ourselves, my name is Brian Benedict, I'm the Director of Strategic Operations. This is Jerry Cox, he's the Director of Operations. Between the three of us, we've got over a hundred years of food service, restaurant hospitality background. We all have worked for Bill, previous and previous concepts. When Bill went out on his own and developed the concept of Billy Jack's Pizza Pub, he came to us to join his team, which we happily and, and, and very eagerly did. We have one location right now, it is in Carney, Nebraska. It opened in April of this, this last year, April twenty one, right? Yeah. And, and so far it's, it's been absolutely outstanding. We've had great response, we've had great turnout. You know, with the, with opening a restaurant in the COVID era, you know, there's definitely been some challenges. We are opening two locations here in Cheyenne. We are opening our first location in the Cheyenne Regional Airport. And then we are opening our second location at, on South Greeley Highway in the Bingo Hall. And that will be a delivery hub, so it won't have actual dining services, but it'll be where anybody can come and pick up our pizza or any of our goods as well as DoorDash and whatever other delivery services that there are. So the, the liquor license that we're looking for is for the airport and, and what we will be doing at the airport. Let me check a few notes here that Bill sent.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
You'd identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, th- this is Bill Winberg and the, the gentleman they were just speaking of, or Billy Jack, as it says on our business sign. The President and CEO for Billy Jack's Pizza Pub. And I just wanted to, to help out a little bit with this section. I apologize, I was not sure how we were gonna get on, not familiar with this style of Zoom link, but I apologize for the inconvenience. Our, our mission here today is, is pretty straightforward and simple. Our, we know what our business concept does and, and we've been through a lot of the processes with the regional airport to ensure that we have an opportunity to help grow Cheyenne and, and help draw attention to the airport with our unique concept. It's a, i- in short, it's really extremely fast food with pizzas, subs, salads and full bar. And it's family friendly as well. But it's like going to a casual dining restaurant and not having to waste the first twenty minutes waiting for a table or waiting for a server or waiting for your drinks and then ordering your food and everything else. It's, you come in, you place your order, you get a, a number, you go sit where you want and everything comes out to you and it's full service from that point on, including the payer tab. Just in our Carney location alone, we've grown exponentially. We've, we've double digit increases since the month of December in growth of our sales. And the biggest thing that I wanted to present to the committee is we pride ourselves in, in being a part of a community and doing everything we can to help the community. We just finished a big fundraiser for the Girl Scouts because it was Girl Scout cookie season. We've got several nonprofit organizations that we're helping do events for and raising money for, and we're doing a lot of catering. And that's the purpose that we're here for today is we want to help the community as much as we can and, and along with our, our business and our ownership, which is comprised of sixty percent people from there in Cheyenne, we have one hundred shareholders and sixty of them are there in Cheyenne, including one of our board members, Brian Gregorcheck, or most of you guys know him as Alf. And Alf couldn't be with us today, he had a prior engagement out of state. So he wanted to, to mention that he himself is, is gonna be a huge part of the things that we do within the community. And if, if you go, I'm sure are familiar with his work, he lives his life to help other people. He's, he and I are, are similar souls that we do what we can to help other people. And we started this company to create a concept that allows staff members to grow and to create their own career paths and, and make great money and be treated with respect. We are the only, in Carney, for instance, we've been open since April and we're out of forty one restaurants. We are the only ones still fully staffed because of the way we take care of our people and, and the culture that it breeds. We have those two locations in Cheyenne owned by all those sixty people that are going to help promote the business and using their, their connections and their reach within the community should provide a, a tremendous amount of opportunities for us to do catering events and show off what we do. We have, we have fantastic food and we have the best people, the people that know how to, to take care of, of guests and enhancing their experience, not just serving them, but enhancing their experience. And that's what the gentleman in front of you are, Jerry and Brian, they've been working with me and for me for, for several years now and they're the best of the best. When I started this, they were the first two people I called. And I'm, I'm super thrilled to have them a part of the company and Alf to be there as well. But rather than take all the time to, to talk about everything about our specific business model, we are a bar restaurant owned by sixty people there who thrive on helping people and we want to do that for the community. We want to have as many events as possible. Anybody that comes to us, we would be happy to, to consider finding a way to do that. In fact, just in Carney again, I just booked over caterings for over three thousand people in the last week and a half with graduations coming up and some weddings even this summer and the fall. And, and that's all through word of mouth of what we've done already and, and what we've done for the community here in Carney. I'm unfortunately not able to be there because of the, the increase in business here. I've got to stay hands on and make sure that it continues to grow. But those two gentlemen in front of you are there full time to do exactly what I'm doing there for the Carney, for the Cheyenne community. So rather than take any more of your time, I just, I really thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Clearly a regular liquor license will, will allow us to serve people within the realm of the business itself. But we have a lot bigger eyes than, than a lot of people and a lot more experience and we want to be out there in the community doing other things. Brian, can you tell me, did Tim make it, is Tim there?
Yes, Tim is here.
Okay. I will leave you with that and I'll answer questions, but a lot of events that we want to do not only will enhance the airport and bring more people into Cheyenne through, through those means, but we're a destination location. We get people coming from surrounding states that have connections to us that, that want to come experience it. And we hope to do that for Cheyenne as well and for, for any location we do in the future as we start to franchise here in the next three years across the country. Our second location is right there and it's one of our flagships that will be bringing people in to see the model as they're choosing what they want to grow with. So with that, I will stay on to answer questions if needed. But we did want to invite Tim Bradshaw, the Director of Aviation for the Airport, to come in and speak his, on the airport's behalf on how this retail license with the, with the catering function will enhance Cheyenne and the airport itself.
Will you hear me, okay? Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Collins. My role here tonight is very limited. I don't have a personal, I'm sorry, Tim Bradshaw. My role here tonight is very limited. I don't have a personal or professional stake in this application other than to support one of our business partners at the airport. We have over thirty entities and organizations that operate the airport and this is one of our new partners that'll be opening up next month. So we want them to be successful, their success is our success, so we are here to support their application for the liquor license.
Tim, any further comments?
Just open for whatever questions.
Questions from committee?
Mr. President. I, I may have missed in the presentation, but can you review for me again, how you and again, one of the privileges of retail liquor licenses is to be able to cater functions with alcohol. So can you review for me again how you intend to use that aspect of the license?
Yeah, a- a- as I mentioned, our, our goal is to be as involved with the community as possible. Catering is a large aspect of what we do and with our extended experience, I think Brian mentioned we have over a hundred years of experience between the three of us and I really appreciate your point now how old we are, Brian. But we, we live to help other people and if there's some event going on in town and, and they want, they want a, a fun event that they want somebody that's gonna come manage it and enhance the experience of the people coming, then we hope that they're gonna realize that we're the best of the best when it comes to that. So we want to help do as many events as possible, anybody that wants to reach out to us as well as many events at the airport itself to continue to draw new attention to the airport. As, as you guys all well know, that everything that the airport does helps the, the city and the community twofold. So us being a, a partner with them, we want to represent them and the city of Cheyenne the best possible. And that means whatever we can do in catering and events and, and with Alf's extended reach and the sixty shareholders that we have, they're a part of this. There's gonna be a lot of opportunities for, for different types of events, some old and, and popular that are already out there and, and a lot of new ones as well.
Any further questions for committee?
Mr. President. I think somebody to bring this forward, and thank you for letting me ask the last question, I just, this one's more directed to our attorney and I. Sometime in the next week or, or before we have to decide. There was some changes in twelve point four, twelve dash four dash two oh one in regard to retail liquor licenses held by commercial service airports. And I guess I want to know if that has an impact on, on them. So sometime between now and when we get to send this to council, I would like an opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, any further questions?
Mr. President. Mr. Secretary, a couple of quick questions. Your application or your information you gave to has said you'd be open in April of this year, are you ready to open your facility?
Due to some of manufacturing slowdowns and stuff, we are, our open date is getting pushed back to May. The good news is we, we received news today that one of the final pieces that we're waiting for as far as manufacturing, which is our walk-ins, is shipping tomorrow. So with that in mind, that pushes our, our open date to right the first or second week of May. As long as everything goes as planned, that was the last major piece that we were waiting on.
So if you were to receive the license and we put a date on it, let's say third quarter of this year, or it would revert to the city, do you have a problem with that?
No, we, we would be honored just to have the license and it would follow whatever, you know, standings go with it.
Okay, Mr. President, one more. Question, have you looked, have you looked at the bar and grill license, would that work for your facilities?
Yeah, the bar and grill license would work for our facility, but that maintains us within the facility.
Right.
And, and as, as Bill mentioned, we like to get out in the community. We like to do things with the community. We came to Cheyenne, we want to be a part of Cheyenne. And, and yeah, we, we want to make our place the gathering place that everybody comes to. We also want to go out to where people want to be at too, outside in the summertime, spend some times outdoors, have people have a good time. Would like to work with Warren Air Force Base. I was lucky enough to meet a couple military people last week that were on a tour of the airport. We made, made some nice connections of them and, and our GM Kelly. And we'd like to partner with them and do some things with the Air Force people, you know, as well. So with having the retail license, that allows us to get out more and not just make people come to us.
Mr. President. To follow up on the councilman from Ward Two's question, one of your shareholders already has a retail liquor license. Couldn't you use that for the catering aspect?
Yeah, I can take that. He, his, his license, he has his own entity that, that he's the, the sole owner of. He's on our Board of Directors and, and his interest is, is with the other sixty shareholders there in Cheyenne that are a part of the ownership structure of our company. So the answer is yes, he sure could, but this is a better way for him to, to help the rest of, or more people in Cheyenne. It, it won't be too indifferent from the things that he's done, but he doesn't have the, the food aspect and the staffing that we would have, that we have a, a much bigger reach and can do a lot more events than he would be able to do by himself.
Secrets, I'm sorry, one more follow up. Do you have any plans for a package of use of this license, packaged liquor store?
We don't at this point. We, we certainly can, I mean, the, the Bingo Hall aspect is, is just a delivery hub, but has all sorts of opportunities for growth if we wanted to do something bigger than that. In the Carney, Nebraska location, we do have that license to sell package. So if somebody wanted to go or take it with them or, or buy an extra six pack, they can. Size of space is ju- usually the biggest limitation that keeps us from doing full on packaged liquor, because you can't just keep a huge inventory in that limited amount of space. But it's something that we would seriously try to, try to consider for down the road in the future. The catering side of it is, is really the largest avenue we want to push.
Thank you. Thank you. For the questions from committee?
Yes, Mr. President. Does your Carney location have a liquor license?
Yes.
And then what are your ballpark figures for your monthly gross receipts at that location?
Grocery seats probably around eighty thousand. We're, we're, we're progressing double digit increases month after month since December. So we fully project to get back over the hundred thousand dollars a month. And that's the in-store revenue.
Mister Johnson. Did he want to follow up to see if that was alcohol or?
Yeah, I was looking like to know if, if I may, should I may ask for clarification, clarification on that? Bill, was that, those gross receipts, I, I think, I believe my colleague was wondering what the gross receipts were for alcohol sales, was, was that the case or, or was that total gross sales from the Carney location?
That was totally in-house gross sales and, and we averaged anywhere between thirty and forty percent, that being liquor. So thirty to forty thousand dollars a month currently in the Carney location. Cheyenne location would, would clearly be much higher because ours is more of a, a family friendly thing in, in Carney where the Cheyenne Airport's gonna be more of a destination place like Cloud Nine and those were in the old airports. And so it'll have a, a lot higher percent going on the alcohol side, I'm sure.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, when you're ready.
Mister Johnson.
So same as previous, since some of them have already been answered. Will your employees have the health insurance and 401K benefit?
We, we chose not to provide the actual insurance. Instead, we provide an independent insurance agents that is licensed with all of the independent companies and they shop around and help our staff. So when they're hired with us, we set them down with our independent agents and they help them find the best fit for them and the best price, including whatever government programs might be out there and all the different insurance companies available to find the best fit for them, which turns out to be half the cost of, of what corporate insurance is. So it's actually saving our people money and our company money doing it that way.
And then how many employees do you tend to have at the airport location?
We, we estimate we'll probably start with forty. We we estimate we'll probably start with forty. We'll probably be down to twenty five, I would assume, just through the the beginning stretches and, you know, the fallout of of stress or something that just wasn't right fit for people, but we'll probably maintain around twenty five.
So I guess because of your location, are you bound by the hours of operation of the airport?
We are not. They the airport is is working with us as as we are working with them. We'll make sure we're open for all of their their flights, whether it's early in the morning or late at night, we'll make sure that we're open for that. But our business model itself is intended to run. We have a breakfast all day on top of everything else. So we hope to open it at early in the morning and until ten or eleven, but we're completely flexible on whatever the needs of the community are and and what people are wanting us for will be there.
I guess my next question is more for Mr. Bradshaw in regards to a current article because he would probably know more about FAA administration. So if he wants to come up here first. Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson. Okay, so in regards to like what you hear us asking about catering. There's an article in regards to the FAA wants airport bars to sell stop selling alcohol to go. This is dated in August ninth of twenty twenty one. And so have you heard anything about this in regards to this type of sale since it looks like that's what the FAA is kind of steering in a direction for?
Yes, sir, you are correct. Due to all the unruly incidents that's happened on airplanes in the last couple of years. The flight attendants and others have petitioned the FAA to not allow drinks to be brought onto the airplane. As a matter of fact, when you get on the last flight I just took, they made announcement on the intercom that you're not allowed to bring outside alcohol. So that's something that they're trying to combat due to all the rise in incidents that they've had on aircraft.
Yeah, that part I was familiar with as far as flying. I just didn't know as far as, you know, this type of license because it does have catering. Like Mr. Seager brought up in regards to whether it be a bar and grill or a restaurant licenses under those parameters. Yet, you know, if we were to grant a full retail liquor license, then all of a sudden the feds come back. You know that all of a sudden, you know, that kind of opens us up to a lot of other litigation. It's higher up in a city council meeting. So all of a sudden, kind of going back to his caveat, if this was to be awarded, like he asked about, you know, third quarter. I'm concerned about in the future, the federal regulations in regards to airports that all of a sudden this liquor license, if they transfer it, say, in these guys' case, if they were to be awarded, it would make sense to actually transfer it from the airport over to South Greeley Highway. But I'm kind of apprehensive in regards to a retail liquor license at the airport, especially when the feds are putting out articles like this.
I'd say you deserve. I don't really have an answer for that, which was what's the FAA is proposing.
Thank you.
So if I may on that as well, one of the one of the big differences with our location in the in the airport compared to a lot of airport bars, we're pre TSA. So we're before you go through security. And as anybody knows that has has traveled. If you even try taking a bottle of water through TSA, it's impossible. So even if we have a retail style license that allows to go liquor, they could not take it on to through security and on to the plane because again, we are pre TSA.
Yeah, the liquor Jones and aerosols.
Correct. Any questions from committee? Dr. Michelle.
Yes, President Roybal, I have a couple of questions. Through you to the gentleman there with you. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about, I heard Billy Jack say that you hope that he hopes to franchise this into additional locations. He's been open or you guys have been open at the Carney location since April. So not quite a year. And so I'm wondering if this would store or entity would continue to be corporately owned or will it be spun off into a franchise at the airport?
It'll maintain corporate owned, corporately owned. All three of these locations will be owned by the corporation.
Okay, thank you. And then a follow up question, President Roybal, through you. I'm curious as to it sounds, if I understand this correctly, you have currently sixty owners of this airport location. Is that correct?
We have one hundred owners of the Billy Jack's Corporation, of which sixty of them are from there in the Cheyenne area.
And would you be able to provide us a list of those individuals that are owners here in Cheyenne?
Due to privacy, I did not have any of them sign agreements that I could advertise their names. So for their own privacy, I can't tell you who they are. But they're welcome to to talk to you. And and Alpha is the other one that I can mention because he's on the board of directors and that's public record. But yeah, for the protection of the people that that own the company, I won't disclose their names to the public record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Whether it's it's you gentlemen or or Bill, it doesn't matter to me who answers this. So going back to Councilman Johnson's question regarding the the health insurance, I think I understood that the health insurance isn't isn't offered, but that you you basically have a like an MOU or agreement with with an agent who shops around and and helps helps folks obtain their their insurance. I guess then my question based off of that then. What would the average wage be of the employees that work in the Cheyenne Airport facility?
Okay, so we do a looking at eight to ten dollars an hour. We haven't figured that out yet. But we also do a tip share there, which employees share within all the tips which will escalate their wages. Brian, help me out on this one. In Carney, they're averaging.
So over the last eight pay periods, Cardi has averaged right around fifteen dollars an hour.
So that's the goal is to with our wages and with the tip share program is to get them to fifteen to eighteen dollars per hour.
And just to just to follow up. So then roughly starting out at, did I hear forty employees at at startup, but realistically
Forty-five thirty.
After establishment, twenty twenty-five to thirty?
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty. Because you will, like Bill said, you'll always lose a few. So you always over hire at the beginning.
The real answer is it only takes twenty-five to run the restaurant. We we hire at forty because of you don't have a record track record with a lot of the people and some just don't show up for work and and those kind of things. But if if history is a good example, we started with forty-one in Carney. And we didn't lose more than two people for the first three or four months. So we've eventually just through scheduling and availability of hours, we've gotten down to where we we needed to be. And that's at about twenty-five people.
So I just have one more follow up. So so my follow up to that is, so you mentioned the further development of another franchise here in here down here in Cheyenne. What is the timeline for for that franchise? And the reason I ask that question is again, being a being a a small, very new company you know, within within a year. Small company, small business with limited resources. I'm just wondering what kind of strain, I guess I'm trying to gauge what kind of stream trying to open two franchises in the same community could could place on on the company. Maybe that's not a fair question to ask. I'm just wondering what the timeline is. Obviously, this one is is April, May. What's the timeline for opening?
Well, that's a great question. And and I'm glad you asked it because it's not something we we had mentioned, but we're opening both locations simultaneously. The airport is for all the dine-in guests and hopefully the catering and all those things. The one in the bingo hall is just a delivery hub. So all online orders and and orders through the slice app or DoorDash app or off of our website will all be processed through the bingo hall location, which is literally designed just to pump out pizzas. So drivers and and people like that will just go to the bingo hall, pick up the orders to go deliver them. There won't be guests coming inside of that facility. So they're working in in unison together. So instead of the airport location, trying to to handle the demand of the the sixty thousand residents of Cheyenne wanting to try this new pizza, we have an actual delivery hub to take the weight off of the the in-house service of the smaller location there at the airport.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, any further questions from committee? For the questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If you don't mind, we'd like to take a five minute break in the in the interim here, so.
Those people. Speaking like your catering. Because I was my big concern was when.
Okay, Get Bent LLC, or yours?
Perfect. Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Get Bent LLC is a real estate holding company. It is located at the corner of Bent Avenue and Sixteenth Street, seven oh seven West Lincoln Way. Currently, you can see on this map behind you or on your screens that this is the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor master plan. The blue dot in the bottom is the current location. You can see that location currently sits at the middle of the Fifteenth Street Experience. The Cheyenne Greenway intersection from Ames Avenue to Fifteenth Street and the southern end of the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor. Give you a little bit of history on myself. I am a Cheyenne native habitual entrepreneur, I call it. Creative economy advocate, business owner, real estate investor, and some call me a little rough around the edges. I'm currently the managing director of Get or Get Bent LLC. I'm the managing director of West Edge Collective. I've served on boards such as Art Cheyenne, Ford Greater Cheyenne, the Growth Foundry. We have internships and scholarships that we currently offer to Cheyenne High School as well as college level students. I first started my career in Cheyenne in two thousand and six when I moved out of my basement into the Asher Building. Local creative Inc. at that time grew from one or two employees to five employees. We were one of the first renovators within the Asher Wyoming Hub building with Gordon Campbell. We we took a what was a sixties or seventies rehab and turned it into a kind of postmodern design space. From there, I today's Asher Buildings obviously been quite quite renovated over the year. So it's a fully fully functional building in our community. From there, I moved to the corner of Twenty Third and Snyder. That building, the picture you see in the upper left was a two thousand and three picture. We moved in in two thousand and seven. We began renovations with Tom Tishammer, the previous owner there and purchased the building in in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. That location at the northern end of the Reed Ave Rail Corridor currently is home to the Align team that has twenty plus employees there. We grew that from the five that were at Asher Building to twenty plus when I left in two thousand and fourteen. We were awarded the Little Clerk Jones Award for Historic Preservation, Cheyenne Cheyenne Chamber Business Beautification Award. We increased from that two thousand and six property tax of four fifty to twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. We increased from that two thousand and six property tax of four fifty to twenty one, twenty twenty one property taxes. Of a six hundred and seventy percent growth. That's thirty five hundred currently are the taxes. From there, moved on to the, the next spot in two thousand and seventeen, purchased. The, the property at the corner of Bent and Sixteenth Street. That property is under DEQ Environmental Remediation Program, the voluntary remediation program. It is currently within the URA Resolution establishing blight within the Reed Ave Rail Corridor. When we moved in, there were less than ten employees in the radius outside of the, the newspaper. Those consisted of wind electric, the consignment store, wedding store, and several vacancies. The sales tax or the property tax was nine hundred and twenty dollars at that time. Fast forward four years, we have grown this location into a fifty five hundred square foot building. With twenty plus employees, we have won the Chamber Beautification Award. And we have grown the property taxes six hundred and fourteen percent between that time. A little history, some don't think that this property is that historically significant. In eighteen eighty-three, this photo depicts the rail spur that went from Union Pacific to Camp Carlin. For D A Russell, which is now Heavy War Air Force Base. It's been home to Greer lumber during the, the early nineteen hundreds. So obviously helped build a lot of, a lot of Cheyenne. So we, we feel this is a historically significant property. And we're proud to be on it. You can see via the circle in the, in the left-hand side, that is the original west edge of Cheyenne back in the day. Today, this building is home to a marketing agency. This is a picture from two thousand and twenty-one. We threw a free concert for the community, including Rob Base and Coolio. This was at no cost, two hundred patrons, West Edge Collective ended up donating over sixty thousand dollars to make this happen for this area. The building itself is quite unique. We've got what we call a bandolier hanging from the ceiling. It's built of shipping containers. We've got several open and closed spaces. We've, we've taken a big step with artwork in the area. With Paint Slinger's Festival and bringing in a lot of murals to the, to the existing area. There are a lot of cool textures within this building, reclaimed bridge beams. Our contractor Ryman pulled down from train bridges across Wyoming, boxcar flooring from the turnips of the century nineteen hundreds. A very large reclaimed presence, shipping containers, obviously a lot of pain homage to, to the railroad. Currently, this property is where we are applying for the liquor license. Before we get to the concept behind the liquor license, I'd kind of like to share a little bit of story regarding our area-wide development and where we're at today. In two thousand and twenty. We purchased via another entity called Bent Over, and you can see the theme Bent, Get Bent, Bent Over. We purchased this building here. Inventive. This Cheyenne Wind Electric building is forty-five thousand square feet. The twenty twenty taxes were fifty-four hundred dollars when we purchased it. There were six employees on site. Since that time, we've put almost one million dollars of renovation into the building. We have remodeled eight thousand square feet all code compliant. We brought in two inch domestic water. We brought in six inch fire line. We paid over seventy thousand dollars half fees to the city to make this happen. We have finished phase one and have brought in Mr. Bees, which brings in twenty employees to the building right off the bat. We also have a spaces West Edge Collective in which we have expanded our sign shop because of our lack of space in our current building. Fast forward to today, we're, we're really proud to announce publicly that we are under contract with MHP. To purchase and condo the building. They will be looking at a thirty thousand square foot renovation. Along with us in the early conversations of a L triple C culinary facility within that building. So we are looking that within the next eighteen months, fully activate this building and have all of MHP's. Currently sixty to seventy onsite employees at this location with the ability. I think currently they are, they are over eighty employees. With the culinary facility, we are expecting additional, obviously, employees and economic development. The estimated forty thousand dollar of annual taxes is a six hundred and forty percent increase. All of these numbers have been around with the URA Department with planning and development. Looking at possibly utilizing TIP funds for area-wide economic green. So that, that's awesome. We're, we're really thrilled that we can finally publicly announce this. Over the past two years, we put a lot of, a lot of effort into making this deal happen. We also, because of that, are under contract to purchase the industrial building right next door. The, during the transaction with MHP, the transaction with the industrial building and the lot to the east of that will happen. Within that same week. So really, that, that building itself is a twenty-eight thousand square foot facility. Currently, its taxes are seventy-one hundred per month. There's under ten employees. Industrial does plan on staying for the, for the near term. Long term, obviously, we, we look to activate the, the whole building. So as you can see, when we look at. The past fifteen, twenty years in, in Cheyenne, along Fifteenth Street, all the way up to the northern, excuse me, the northern end of the Reed Ave Rail Corridor. We are excited that, that we're, we're right in the middle of all of that. So the concept for our retail liquor license utilization, we're calling it the rail spur. This location would consist of coffee, cocktails and cuisine. It would be a family and business-friendly establishment. Turn into a high-energy bar after nine P M, four twenty-one and over. We really see that as being an economic development powerhouse with high-paying jobs coming in right across the street. We, we see the ability for this really to grow and sustain quickly. It would have the coffee bistro, handcrafted cuisine from food trucks. A very unique bar environment. There, there's not another one like it in Cheyenne. We'd have a small boutique packaged liquor store, either where our current conference room is or, or in our video studio. We'd have live music and DJs, outdoor entertainment and seating. This here, just quickly, is a little bit of a rendering in which the, the property currently looks. To the south of the building, we have about eighteen parking spots currently. You can see along the north side, that's Lincoln Way, and then we come into Bent Avenue with the large warehouse across the street. Looking towards the southeast, you can start to see the Fifteenth Street, South Fifteenth Street and into the railroad. From here, our goal is to convert this in the next eighteen months into the rail spur. The rail spur would be both an internal and external renovation. Starting with an internal renovation to be able to give the inside of the bar opening by the end of this year. Next year, we would focus on the external as the MHP build out and parking needs are addressed. We would also be handling all of our additional parking needs at that same time. You will see that our current open area would be a bar. We would have shipping containers coming off of the west side of the building. And we would go ahead and really see this whole area start to turn pretty quickly with the parking needs for MHP. As well as the Fifteenth Street Experience. I'm gonna go ahead and pass right through this one. The, the vibe, these coffee and cocktail concepts are all over the nation. They provide for full, full-on. Usage throughout the day, seven A M till. Ten P M, eleven P M midnight, oftentimes two A M on the weekends. It would have a cool vibe, a barista vibe. We'd be able to serve both cocktails in the morning, such as mimosas and Bloody Marys. But as well as support the business crowd and the tourism crowd. The external area would be built of shipping containers. Obviously, bottom right shows our current facility. We do use shipping containers and we want to take that to the exterior and give some exterior event space. Exterior entertainment space for the public. Imagine sitting on the top level and watching all the trainiacs watch. Watch their trains while drinking whiskey. Our small packaged liquor store would be a bit boutique. It would not be the end all be all. It would not have large capacities for cold storage. This would be a very boutique location. It would be operated by Micro Pop-Up Concepts, West Edge Collective, Juan to the right of me and Seth to the left of me. Our owners are Micro Pop-Up Concepts. When the pandemic started, West Edge Collective invested in with Micro Pop-Up Concepts. And have been working with them to help grow their, their food truck business over the past couple of years. I'm gonna see if this will work here, playing videos from within, but they gave a. Hopefully you guys can hear. Long, short, let me, let me open this back up here. These gentlemen are fully trained professionally trained to help start the Metropolitan. Food facilities for the past ten or fifteen years. They have excellent ratings, focused on community enhancement. They're incubators of awesome and they would give the ability to utilize it immediately with catering. This would be a destination for locals with the unique attraction for tourists. This does align with voter priorities. There will be increased sales tax, property values and overall value. We'll have twenty plus employees. Currently, there's been great community sentiment come towards this project with over a thousand digital high fives. With several partnership requests and support from economic development leaders. We are within the three, three licenses within six blocks. We are compatible with other neighborhood activities. We need current zoning requirements. We are helping several blighted properties. We have social and economic opportunities in millions. We're not within the, the area of a church or a hospital. We anticipate to be operational this year. It will be a business anchor. We will historically renovate several buildings along Fifteenth Street. Our hours are conducive. And we, we meet all of the guidelines and considerations for the city council. Our goal, take this property within the next eighteen months, turn it into this with activation with Greenway Fifteenth Street and the Reed Ave Rail Corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from committee?
Mr. Church, for you, Chad, I would just, I was curious. Just real quick, so obviously this, this plan would, would displace your career business. And I don't remember if you said, and I was trying to pay attention to the slides. So where would you then end up relocating the crew business into the, the adjacent warehouse or? Industrial?
Correct. Currently industrials lease only covers one level of the three-level building. So there is significant opportunity for us to immediately move if awarded this. That we would have some build out to, to get us code compliant. We could also, while doing these developments. Be within our current space that we did renovate within the first eight thousand square feet. So we've got some options.
But you're, but you're follow-up. But your, your, your plan ideally is, is. West Edge Collective would in, in some form remain in that area.
Correct.
Any further questions or comments from committee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
Same as always. So how would you use the remote catering part of the license?
The remote catering would be partnered with Micro Pop-Up Concepts currently. Last year, they did two hundred thousand dollars worth of catering. We believe that with the access to the liquor license and the partnership here. We could immediately begin offering catering services with alcohol in the partnership between the rail spur and Micro Pop-Up Concepts.
Okay, I'll have to look. Into the legality of that one to see exactly how that one's gonna work.
Correct. We, we have not done the formal business structure of what this looks like and how, how that, that works. We would not be serving alcohol out of the food truck, out of Los Canajos. But offering it in tandem with Los Canajos during their catering.
If I can speak on that.
So we currently cater to different places in, in Cheyenne. And when we get asked to serve liquor, we end up partnering with somebody who already has a liquor license. For example, Dillinger's is someone who we partner in the past. So it would just work in a similar way, except now, you know, the Micro Pop-Up Concepts owns. Los Canajos food truck and is part of the rail spur, but they're two different entities working together.
Then, since you guys have an open, what do you estimate your annual projection of alcohol sales to be?
We, we expect around four hundred thousand dollars in the first year in two thousand and twenty-three with the outdoor space. We expect to grow significantly past that to hopefully seven hundred thousand dollars of alcohol-only sales with it by two thousand and twenty-four.
And then, would you offer, I guess. I guess I could ask the question reversed. How many new employees do you intend to have for this?
We expect the rails, the rail spur to support at least twenty employees. That will be on a scaled basis, the first year with the internal only, the inside only until the exterior space. Then that will grow with obviously security needs, additional outdoor server need. Excuse me, we would expect a fourteen dollar plus tip average salary to start with. But managers obviously being in the twenties and thirties. We currently, through our relationship with Micro Pop-Up Concepts, do offer 401K. And actually, it's an IRA and health benefits through, through how we're dealing with inter-company transactions.
And then, I believe you stated the hours already, and then you don't have any really modern trends. Cause you guys are kind of adapted with that, so I don't have an interesting question.
Any further questions from committee?
Mr. President. I'll follow up, like I've asked everybody else. You indicate you'll have the indoor bar open by the end of the year?
Correct. If the license is awarded within the April, May time period. To be able to give us great light on planning and construction, because we have so new of a building. There is very little build out we would need to do to be compliant with local fire codes and.
I really think we're gonna put a reverter on, or we've talked about trying to put a reverter if it's not completed within a. Let's say first quarter twenty-three, whatever, a fairly broad timeframe that would revert back to the city. So it's not just sitting out there being. Or not being used for an extended period. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Any questions from committee? Stress about?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Chad, if you have, when you got the whole concept up and running. Planning on having private security?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, we, we work with several different security organizations through our concerts that we put out. During all of those, we had tips training for all of our employees who were servers during that. We absolutely follow the local rules, regulations and guidelines. And we would have our own security and bouncers to be able to take care of those evening crowds. Security obviously wouldn't be a concern during the day.
For the questions from committee? And I don't see Michelle on. So, um, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have Ike's Bar and Grill next. Were you out shooting a few baskets or?
She's a, she just said she's a panelist, can we make her a, she's not a panelist? Good evening, Mayor Collins, esteemed members of Cheyenne City Council. My name is Brian Eichholz and I represent Capital Cuisine LLC. And I'm pleased to come before you with a proposal of my application for a retail liquor license to be used at Ike's Bar and Grill located at one twenty-two West Sixth Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming, eight two zero zero seven. Now, you know what you're all thinking, Ike's Bar and Grill, it's not EK. But after a little bit of persuasion, I think we're talking to him, he might be an Ike by next year. At least get him over here for a meet and greet, I think. My intent is to provide alcoholic beverages with amazing food in a safe and entertaining environment. Adding a sorely needed establishment to the south side of Cheyenne for residents to enjoy a late night drink, catering for off premise events to place a to place a place to grab a bottle of wine after dinner. And above all, the license gives me the freedom to be open seven days a week and later every evening in a in a friendly and fun environment. I was born and raised in Cheyenne, Wyoming on a glorious August evening nineteen seventy-eight. Graduated from Cheyenne Central in nineteen ninety-seven. Hope you don't hold that against me, Mr. Mayor. Graduated a three point eight GPA. I was also all state in both basketball and soccer during both my junior and senior years. Sports has always been a big part of my life and a true passion. Sticking to my home roots, I attended the University of Wyoming. After graduation, I returned to Cheyenne with my family and became the bar manager of Jackson's All American Sports Bar and Grill with OD Enterprises of Cheyenne. A year and a half later, I was given the promotion of area coach to southeastern Wyoming Pizza Huts. After seven years on the job, I decided I'd had enough of the corporate life and decided on a personal venture of Capital Cuisine. Capital Cuisine is located at seventeen twenty Capital Avenue, right here in downtown Cheyenne. As you can see in the picture, that's what we took over and built it into a very nice little restaurant downtown. After three years of supporting and loving downtown, I was graced with the opportunity to renovate and create my true passion. Ike's Bar and Grill was born.
I don't know who that guy is.
It's the only guy in the room, I have less hair than. All right, now here comes this, I'm a proud parent. Oh, here's my couple more projects of the beginning of Ike's. What we started when we actually took the location over. As you can see, it was quite the undertaking. I'd like to take note of the murals, I'll talk about those just a little bit. Oh, there you can see I'm doing something, but obviously not afraid of getting a little dirty. Oh, there is my lovely wife, Kalen. I might be the only time she held the drill, but she was there. All right, I'm the proud parent of two children and six stepchildren. With our split family household, we see all parts of Cheyenne. Two kids at central, one at east, one at Cary and two at Jessup. Both the older kids have careers and have finally moved out of the house. My wife, Kalen, is not only the glue of our family, but finds time to be at the restaurants and keep up with her career as the events and marketing director at the depot. Oh, wait. That might just be your desk, but that's Patrick Collins. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that picture. Kalen is also a graduate of both Cheyenne Central and the University of Wyoming. Pope pride runs deep in our family. In September, you're coming, Mr. Councilman Escobell. In September of twenty twenty, the real work began. Thirteen months of dedicated work by my father-in-law and my father David and Jim Coker. In the audience today, we began to see a restaurant forming right before our eyes. I got in the way most of the time, but with my vision and their countless hours, my dream was created. Between all the renovations, we had new flooring, new bathrooms, a brand new kitchen, new decor, paint, walk-in coolers, new walls. Literally, every single thing was touched by our hands to try to renovate this beautiful old building. Here is the window we had to take out for the patio we put in. Brand new kitchen, brand new hood, everything, all equipment was completely brand new. New bathrooms, we had to move to make ADA approved. Here is a brand new walk-in cooler as well. And of course, when I was thinking of this originally, Mr. Johnson, you came up first with the new outdoor patio. Being in business this long has made me realize one inevitable truth, keep debt minimal. Everything, every piece of equipment, TV, bar stool, bar, bar countertop, equipment, everything for my last spoon in the restaurant is one hundred percent paid for. The building and the building alone is all that I have debt on. By not having any equipment or startup costs, where startup debt solidifies the financial stability of Ike's. I look forward to many more decades as both a resident of Cheyenne and a proud member of downtown. Demographically, I am only one of two full-service restaurants to cater to approximately fifteen to twenty thousand people that reside south of Fox Farm Road. I give credit to these residents for my early success, but I'm also amazed expansionally by how much success and how much Cheyenne has just brought to our location on the south side. In the short five months that Ike's has been open, we have generated these numbers. We have run over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in gross sales, which is over four hundred and twenty thousand net sales. That produced twenty-two thousand in sales tax revenue, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in payroll, which is twenty thousand dollars of payroll taxes. On top of this, what we would like to say is currently we're running about twenty-six percent alcohol, which is including my beer and alcohol and wine sales. Fifteen percent of that is beer, the other eleven percent is alcohol and wine. How we break that down. On the bottom number, if you'd like to see, we've had seventy-five thousand dollars tips paid to employees in our short five months. Every employee is offered insurance, management is paid by me. Others part-time are actually brought in, I'd help pay for them. We we've offered this multiple times, I think we've sat down at least three times since I've opened. Oh, on this final number up here, when you start doing all the math on this, after the five, five year, or five months we've done with about a hundred nine thousand dollars in alcohol sales, which is, if you do that over the course of the year, we're looking at two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars currently. Ike's has had very little turnover of employees, but with the lack of my back back of house employees, we are currently only open from Tuesday to Sunday, closing at nine PM Tuesday through Thursday, ten PM Friday and Saturday and five o'clock on Sunday. When I'm awarded this license, I can open seven days a week. I won't have that unnecessary lack of, you know, or I guess back of house employees dragging down what I can be making in sales revenue. By opening additional twenty-five hours a week, the projected revenue of this license will generate is roughly three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. The way I came up with that math is I literally took my week sales of average, divided them by my current hourly way or hourly sales, then added the extra hours of sales that I could possibly have, multiplied that for the week, which was seventy-five hundred dollars a week, which of course turns out to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. This is an additional twenty-six percent of income. This economic impact is not only influencing my business, but businesses around me. The local business across the street has seen a significant uptake in sales. Is repaved his parking lot and beautified his building. The lot to the east of Ike's that once stood stood a condemned house, which is now part, which was part of the initial purchase, has been torn down and as a sore and a sorely needed beautiful parking lot has been put in its place. Larry Hotel now has new orders and is being beautifully remodeled. Corey, we all know, has specifically told me without these improvements, she would have had a hard time purchasing that building. The MP Act to our neighborhood has also been significant. Not one disturbance or police interaction in my establishment. Have not had one alcohol-related accident or incident. Residents close to us have told me that we have a significant decrease in crime. No theft of any kind has occurred and have, and with the help of our surveillance systems, I believe we have made the neighborhood just a better place. Going back here, these are just initial photos from the exterior of Ike's. Giving back to the neighborhood was always a high priority of mine. We were able to safely remove and return the murals that Ben Valdez hand painted. He painted these beautiful murals of art, liquid nailed them to the concrete walls and then ram set them to the wall, then built the arches over with walls. Trust me, it was an undertaking, but we needed to get those down and give them back to them. With a tear in his eye, he you could tell he was eternally grateful. We have donated to the Boys and Girls Club, Thankful Thursday, Cheyenne Frontier Days, just to name a few. Here we are, the initial owner of Ike or of Casa de Trillo, and of course, yours truly, Mr. Councilman Escobell. He was the last one I had to kick out before we closed. By receiving this license, I will be able to grow and expand my business. Allowing customers to grab a quick six-pack and or a bottle of wine after dinner will not only improve sales, but will give residents the opportunity to have a desirable place to buy such products as South Cheyenne is lacking this comfortable entity. All of my employees have that serve or pour alcohol are tips trained and certified. We also have an ID scanner that we do. As all of you know, skill games are blown up all across Cheyenne and Wyoming. This license allows me to add those games into my restaurant. And with the foresight of being awarded this license, I've already made the appropriate power needs to accommodate these such games. Again, providing a comfortable, relaxing environment is critical to individuals who desire such activities. Catering. Catering is the biggest opportunity to grow sales and offer the residents of Cheyenne a sorely needed amenity. I have been turned down by over a dozen catering jobs as clients love our food, but do not want to deal with multiple vendors. This market is very, very cornered, and I believe it necessary and critical to Cheyenne to add more options for our citizens. By using catering numbers for my previous businesses, I projected increase in sales to anywhere from eight to twelve percent. In conclusion, I really would like to give a shout out to the people that are the backbones of Ike's. You guys are the reason we're successful. With your permission, can I have these people just raise their hands, just be to support? Please, stand up. Every one of these just came out to support me standing up in front of you, gentlemen. We are boots on the ground, ready to use this license yesterday. We want to continue to grow our business and Cheyenne. I appreciate all of your time as you entertain my passion. I cannot imagine a more thankless job than yours, and you all seem to do it with ease. From the bottom of my heart, we thank you.
Okay, we don't allow that in this workshop, okay? Please calm down. Okay, any questions from committee?
Yes, sir, when you're ready. So you made reference to your operating hours. And so, when I, because I knew state statute changed, I believe in twenty seventeen, that we had to make modifications to this. And so, one reference I could see on hours of operation, all sales of alcohol or mock beverages authorized by a restaurant liquor license shall cease at the time food sales cease or at the hour specified in section five, one, two, one, three, zero, which according to that says that the hours of operation allowed for sales of any annual licensee or permitting shall be daily from six AM to two AM its following day. Licenses and permits shall clear the licensed building of all persons other than bona fide employees who are providing clerical, janitorial, inventory stocking or similar work-related services. So I guess is the reason that you're, I couldn't find anything in relationship to Sundays anymore. I know that they used to have restrictions on them, I thought that all went away in twenty seventeen. So just reading city code, which I know is more restrictive, is it because of your operating hours when you want to close down your kitchen that you're not able to sell? What was the inhibitor for not being open longer?
That's absolutely, it seems to be the issue. Again, with the, again, referencing to my back of house, which is where most of my labor costs lie. You know, the cooks, the dishwashers, everybody back there, and in this day and age, we do have to pay them, you know, quite a bit more than we used to. To have them back there running the kitchen, to have things open in order to keep the license out of the front of the house operable, I'm literally just, you know, washing, you know, feeding Peter to pay Paul. There's no, there's no intermediate thing, because you know, there just isn't that food sale. Once it gets past that, you know, nine, ten o'clock hour, where we can do still be doing, you know, some revenue with those, you know, with the license. According, you know, Sunday nights just kind of seem to slow down, people do it, but they still like to go out there, watch their sports, still do it. Currently, with the staff that I have, almost every single one of my kitchen staff starts or is on overtime by Sunday, just with the hours that we're running currently.
I guess, going into the bar and grill, I get with your food sales cease, but isn't under the bar and grill license that you're to do sixty forty? So even if you're open, is your capacity for alcohol sales after nine PM gonna literally create that kind of catastrophic difference on your sixty forty bar and grill?
I believe it will, and just this percent that I'm doing right now, and as new as I am and as little as I'm known, I only see that number going bigger. That's what really concerns me, we start getting into those high thirties and all of a sudden, I've got to really, you know, be careful with what I'm doing. That's that's definite, definite concern.
Then I guess for my follow-up, just that one, you just, you were the first person to really bring that up in regards to operating hours. So I wanted to make sure that was, because I knew it was more restrictive under city code. So, and then you kind of covered already your catering part of it. And then, so, and then you kind of alluded to, but do you see like your, like you said, after nine PM, what do you actually see as your project, annual projection of alcohol sales after that time compared to what you're already doing?
Again, I I only can grab with what data I have. So
As far as projections.
Projections, again, I do think that we're looking at that, again, hundred nine thousand. You start doing the math on that, it's gonna get into those low thirties and we're only a year into this and we show no signs of slowing down. So be in that late night place catering to that part of town, not to mention catering off-premise with alcohol, where we're just a one-stop shop, which I have all the facilities to do. That number is going to massively increase and could easily pass that forty percent even in our first year.
Then, so then as far as your, do your current employees have health insurance and 401K benefits?
Yep, we offer to every employee, management, I offer to pay full. Other for part-time employees, we've, we've had them brought in, explain what there's available. Kind of falls on them whether or not they would like that deducted from their paycheck. Really, it's 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 their decision whether they like it or not.
And then, how many new employees do you intend to hire if it was granted?
You know, right now, we're running with about, well, like I said, thirty-two employees currently. I believe to run, you know, just like our steam engine we are, we're probably need to be in the forties. We really are searching hard for back of house help, front of house is doing very well. You know, bartenders, we could definitely use a little help, but really, my emphasis is on the on the back of house for sure.
Okay, and then, and then so, kind of going into your hours of operation, you just know that you'd be able to fluidly stay open from six AM to two per city code.
Yes, absolutely. And that, and this is, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. When I did this, it was literally, I went back and I looked at adding, I believe I added two, I added two hours on my weeknights. So all of now Monday, going from eleven to ten, Tuesday, eleven to ten, and then opening up my weekends, you know, till that two o'clock hour. So that's where I gained those extra twenty six hours. And obviously, there's more hours to be gained if, if it's possible. That's where I just came up with the number of always, let's go low, make sure we hit our numbers. We can always go skies the limit.
I guess the last question I would have as far as like the business model and trends go, I mean, do you see that your family would take this business on? Because that's one thing that we've seen within the last three weeks here is the transition of family ownership, where basically they hit their retirement zenith. And then all of a sudden, what was, you know, presented to us tonight, the entire dynamic changes, you know, around retirement age. And so with this type of model, you know, continuing going on, you know, as a family restaurant. And I know Casa de Trillo was there for, you know, like forty five years, but this is something that we have to be concerned about now.
Hundred percent, if I even can make my son Trey Ferrari, it might have been the biggest argument in our home when I decided to sell Capital Cuisine. This was his goal of his life to be able to run that restaurant. We now have Trey Cadence, Cadence, I'm sorry, Trey Cadence and Cooper that work for us currently. That's our eighteen, our sixteen, and our fourteen year old that all work for us now. And all three of them are doing phenomenal. All want us try to be somewhat involved with the business for a very long time.
For the questions for committee.
Same question I'm asking everybody, obviously, you're ready to go. If you got the license, you could do it today.
Absolutely.
Okay, one follow up question, how about, how about the package side? What's your plan there?
You know, I, I guess I would, I would model it a lot after kind of what Alf does. You know, he has the liquor store right there. The big idea I would have is where I did, where you saw the walk in cooler that I have there, I would maybe extend that where it kind of has those walls that we have of Alf's, where you know, you're allowed to do it. We can bring out the package, you can sell that across the counter, you can buy a bottle of wine after dinner, you can buy a bottle of, you know, alcohol after dinner. That's where I model that up, you know, bring in an actual glycol system for the, you know, the beer drafts, where just, you know, pumps right through those doors. Those things would be the additive to be able to get this license to just improve the way we're doing business.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for committee? Mr. Escobar.
This just kind of goes back to what we heard earlier that with state laws, how antiquated they are. And then it adds that confusion to it as well. So then when we're given the opportunity to have one liquor license to give out, and you're already seeing how competitive this is, and everybody's really well qualified here tonight to, to be awarded it, you know, but you don't see that when a community loses population, you don't see the state going back and saying, well, now you got to give those liquor licenses back. I think one of the things that I've, I've thought about is we end up giving out liquor licenses, and then they end up evolving into something else of what we didn't intend it to be. So I guess, Brian, I'd ask you a question. What would you think if we were to promote that when liquor licenses were transferred there to be transferred back to the city?
So I had the license, and if I decided to use it somewhere else down the road, it would have to go back to the city? Oh, I, you know, I think that's fair. I know, we all know that we've been, the city of Cheyenne has been kind of burnt on that idea, where just, you know, we say we're going to do one thing, and then, of course, something else happens. I don't foresee any, any changes in my near future where we're going to go with Ike's. I just believe this is, this is kind of the calling, and this is where I want to be, and this is where, you know, I'm decent at, I'd say I'm a good solid sixty percent when I do it.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, it looks like we have the old Cheyenne elevator next.
Good evening, President Roybal, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. I'm Jen Sykes. I live here in Cheyenne, and I'm a partner at Fullipup LLC, a group of small business owners and investors who are passionate about the downtown Cheyenne and the West Edge. LLC, Fullipup LLC consists of myself and my husband, Dr. Greg Sykes, Dr. Andy Rose and his wife, Janelle. And together, we are the OCE team. First, I'd like to take a moment to familiarize you with the old Cheyenne elevator, or as we often refer to it, the OCE. Built in nineteen twelve, this one hundred ten year old building is perched along the northwest corner of the proposed Reed Avenue corridor project. The elevator is one of several buildings on our campus at the OCE. It creates a unique opportunity for a community destination and a catalyst for the development, development of the West Edge. Are you seeing that video come through up there? Kind of, okay. Before we share our current concept for the OCE, we'd like to point out that this historical building was identified by the City of Cheyenne's Metropolitan Planning Organization almost ten years ago as a keystone property right for development along the rail corridor and what was identified at that time as the West Edge District. Additionally, sometime around two thousand thirteen, the MPO dedicated a substantial amount of time, effort, and resources to develop the plan for the Reed Avenue corridor. The yellow arrow here indicates the OCE's location along the corridor. This image, along with the following three slides, were taken directly from the West Edge and Reed Avenue corridor websites. Incorporated with inputs from property owners, businesses, and community stakeholders, the OCE was heavily highlighted as a character building and a priority development property for the West Edge District. A warehouse district was designated along the corridor as well. And as you can see here, the OCE once again played a prominent role. These plans for the corridor and the West Edge were the result of a lot of hard work. Many properties were researched and highlighted. And that said, we feel it's really important to point out that several of the other properties that were highlighted in the MPO's original rail corridor project plans were vacant at that time and have since been developed. This rendering, taken from the MPO's project website, is an example of how the OCE could positively change the landscape of the corridor. While our concept differs, the potential impact remains the same. It is now the year two thousand twenty two. The old Cheyenne elevator has been waiting a very long time, and it stands ready for its turn. What is the OCE? As my partner, Janelle Rose, has said, in essence, the OCE reflects an ambitious new future for Cheyenne and the West Edge. We're very excited to show you more about that tonight. Here's an interior rendering of the grain elevator, available, the grain elevator building, depicting two food trucks along the left side. Set against the backdrop of the Reed Avenue corridor, the OCE is prepared to develop the grain elevator building into a unique gathering and entertainment destination. The vision for the OCE is simple. It will be a phenomenal community gathering space. It will be a business incubator to inspire a thriving restaurant scene and promote local businesses. And it will be an economic catalyst for the West Edge. Through partnerships with local food trucks, the OCE provides a year round indoor landing pad for Cheyenne businesses that currently experience a major slowdown during Wyoming's harsh winters, as mentioned in a recent article in the Wyoming Tribune Eagle. In conjunction with this rotating mobile food menu, the elevator will offer guests a permanent full service bar in a unique space welcoming the entire family. Spending time in the OCE will transport you to another place and time. Not your typical bar, the beverages served will highlight local producers, encouraging you to sit back and relax, catch up with friends, and watch the kids play outside in the courtyard. Our roll up garage style doors will welcome in Cheyenne's unbeatable breeze while creating broader connections to our neighbors in the West Edge. Guests will also have the opportunity to take home craft, craft brews and distilled spirits from our packaged liquor store, specifically highlighting some of the best beverages that Wyoming has to offer. While meeting all five of the considerations specified in the city council resolution regarding applications, ranging from neighborhood compatibility to zoning to social and economic benefits, Fullipup believes the OCE has put forth a uniquely ideal application, particularly as it pertains to the economic development of a blighted property. The team here at OCE respects the opportunity that this license presents the community. With limited availability of retail licenses, our very first step was to review the variety of licenses available under the Wyoming system and to determine if we could operate under any of those other available licenses. Unfortunately, based on the mixed use of our concept and due to the architectural restrictions preventing the addition of a commercial kitchen, the OCE cannot operate under any of the other available licenses as depicted in this table. Okay, moreover, we'd like to point out that there are some other applications for this single available license that could likely still move forward with part or all of their proposed projects under alternative licensing options. The OCE thrives on local partnerships. It will support established and emerging food entrepreneurs and offer an attractive solution for food trucks to continue operations year round. It will drive foot traffic to the West Edge, benefiting neighborhood businesses. And it will, it will generate increased property tax revenue and new jobs. But most importantly, this project impacts multiple families in our community. The OCE stands to create income potential for not just our business, but also the families who run the businesses that we intend to partner with, as well as their employees. We intend for the OCE and the entire campus to be a mutually beneficial business opportunity for all. In other words, one license benefits many. When the problem of vacancy and deferred maintenance is not addressed, once salvageable buildings like the OCE often decay to the point which it is not cost effective to revitalize and reuse these spaces. When demolition becomes a necessary cost of redevelopment, there is both a dollar and cultural cost to the community. This project helps preserve the historic fabric and the industrial flavor of the West Edge by returning this historic building to its former glory. The vision of a thriving and vibrant West Edge District is already in the hearts and minds of Cheyenne residents, as evidenced by two successful Six Penny campaigns. Activating the old Cheyenne elevator will create an anchor in the West Edge, making it a worthy destination while inspiring momentum for redevelopment in the entire area. Conceptual planning and building interior renovations have been initiated. And if things go as planned, Fullipup anticipates renovation of the craft liquor store to commence this year in two thousand twenty two and in conjunction with building design and main grate of the main grain elevator and further development of an outdoor courtyard space. The following clip illustrates those plans. Phase one, the craft liquor store this year, six to twelve months out, you'll see that there on the west side of the building. And phase two, the grain elevator in our one hundred ten year old building along the grain, or along the rail corridor, will have pull through food, food truck service year round. As you can see by the arrows, we have doors on each end and a bar and family friendly gathering space right in the heart of the elevator amongst the timbers. There'll be a private dining and event space on the north end of the building. And also, as part of phase two, we'll develop our exterior courtyard spaces denoted by those stars. More exciting, future integration with the Reed Avenue corridor to be determined along the east side of the building with planned garage doors heading out to the patio and the corridor. We hope to be Cheyenne's newest anchor in the West Edge. Here's a street view rendering of what our main courtyard could look like. But the folks at OCE and Fullipup have done our homework. We selected several precedent projects like this one. The Lakewood Truck Park sets out to connect people to a diversity of food and drink in Lakewood, Ohio. It supports hundreds of local food entrepreneurs, and it's become a neighborhood nexus. Jessup Farm is an artisan village restored in two thousand eleven and is located in Fort Collins, Colorado. In fact, it's one of the early, early inspirations for the team here at Fullipup. This unique property brings to life one of Fort Collins' oldest early farmlands with restaurants, homespun retail, and food artisans. Since opening, Jessup Farm has grown to a family of thirteen locally owned businesses. And it's become a mainstay of Fort Collins, where neighborhoods will gather for coffee, a bite to eat, shopping, and more. And then there are the projects that just authentically demonstrate how cool and magnificent these elevators are and how versatile and phenomenal they can be. This is a visual representation of our beautiful property and where we are headed, the OCE. These are actual photos of the interior of the O C E. You can see the history throughout. Notice the unique structure, how raw and beautiful it is. With the right vision, you can see how it stands ready to become an icon. Much to our delight, we discovered this elevator in Oregon. Notice the similarities of the structure, the angles of the beams and the rough-cut timbers. See how they've honored the historical aspects and like we plan to do, have restored and recycled materials throughout. This elevator has been resurrected and has become a lasting legacy for its community. And it's truly amazing. Imagine having something like that right here in Cheyenne. So you've heard us mention the campus of the O C E several times tonight. You see the Old Cheyenne Elevator stands not only to create an anchor in the West Edge and the Reed Avenue corridor, but it also promises to complement a unique campus of locally-owned businesses and outdoor courtyard gathering spaces. Here's a clip to give you a visual layout. This is an overhead view of the property. Along the east border is the grain elevator. Our northern buildings include Blossom Yoga Studio, Hammock Fine Art, as well as another building ready for future development. The building we refer to as the Carriage House will become an outdoor gazebo in the center. The Mini Vic is a late eighteen hundreds home along the west border that would make a stellar wine bar, offering small bites and desserts. The stars denote the outdoor courtyard opportunities, including a fire pit, one of many that we would like to see friends and family gathered around. Mentioned in our site layout, the O C E has since renovated two vacant warehouses on our campus that are now home to two local women-owned businesses. We are incredibly proud to host Joe Lovato and Blossom Yoga Studio, as well as Bria at Hammock Fine Art. The O C E has so much potential. And we are always looking for ways to breathe new life into the entire campus. I'm going to go to this. This clip was pulled directly from the West Edge website. Invest. Invest your life, invest your career, your creativity, your business, your personality, your vitality, yourself. We've heard the message loud and clear. The O C E has accepted this challenge to invest, to invest in the West Edge, to invest in the Reed Avenue corridor, to invest in partnerships with local businesses, to invest in the arts, to invest in the food culture of Cheyenne, to invest in the preservation of an iconic historical building, to invest in our community. As you can see, this project would be unlike anything Cheyenne has seen before. You have the opportunity now to help us facilitate a new kind of gathering space in Cheyenne, one that can become a destination in and of itself. And now we respectfully ask you, Mr. Mayor, and esteemed council members, to invest. Invest your commitment to Cheyenne and your support of the Old Cheyenne Elevator by awarding this project the retail liquor license. We wholeheartedly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Questions from committee?
Mr. President. I just want to understand the timeframe again. I'm looking at page twelve. Your craft store would be open in twelve to fifteen months?
So you, I'm glad you brought that up. We have adjusted our timeframe since we submitted that application in our reel that we just played. We've moved that to six to twelve, or I'm sorry, six to twelve months this year. The plan would be to have that open and start renovations now. The nice part about our liquor store, the space in the grain elevator that will become the craft liquor store, is that it's a newer piece of the building, and so it allows us to renovate it more quickly. So we anticipate having that ready by the end of the year, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, and if you got the liquor license with the reverter, if you didn't have it open by the end of the year?
Well, I think that's a fair question. I think that we would do our due diligence to do our very best to make it happen. I think that I would hope that the committee and the governing body would consider that we are not dealing with brand-new construction, but dealing with the renovation of a historic property, a one hundred ten-year-old building. But that said, we have started some of our due diligence already, and we are poised and ready to move forward with our architects and working on our business plan so that we could move forward with that piece. And it was absolutely intentional that the craft liquor store would be the first piece to be developed because we knew that it was very important to engage the liquor license. As I mentioned before, we absolutely appreciate the opportunity it presents the community, so we would like to engage it immediately.
Mr. President, and phase two, twenty-four months?
So again, in the reel that we played in this presentation, we have adjusted that to twelve, twelve to fifteen months. I think barring any surprises, that we would like to see the second phase open by the end of two thousand twenty-three, possibly as early as next summer.
Thank you. Any further questions from committee?
Mr. Johnson? So just looking at your presentation, one thing that makes me apprehensive is when we awarded the Metropolitan Air Force Full Retail License, Sam got really backed up because of remediation projects until we had the open provisions, which kind of just was, you know, some basically like Sam's Club bought shelves where he was able to purchase the amount of alcohol required under state law to actually keep the operating costs open. And so looking at this, you know, it looks like that's, you could probably do that in six months, or probably even tomorrow if you just went and bought shelves and opened the door, you could be ready to go then. As far as the rest of the project though, like just looking at even on your food truck model and seeing it was indoors, with two food trucks in there, and even looking at your spacing, because you said that you couldn't do a full retail kitchen in there because of space requirements, but still the food trucks are going to be required to actually meet those same health guidelines and stuff. If it was indoors, I just kind of looked at this and wondered how the ventilation was going to work when you actually have two exhaust covered things and these things operate basically on generators and diesel fuel. So when those fumes are going through your entire place, I mean, that's one thing I can see the health department probably flagging you on as well as, you know, just to open air ducts on that. So as far as, that was just kind of what I was apprehensive on, that granted, you could open your liquor store right away, but as far as the remainder of the project being completed to actually meet the goal, I would just hate to, you know, offer a retail liquor license to something that could have been purchased at Sam's Club with Shelby. So not that I don't say that your project doesn't have merit, it just looks like it's pretty ambitious, you know, for all the rest of the goals for something that we already saw Mr. Galliard has already got through, you know, when we got his.
Well, I appreciate that you used the word ambitious because I think that would absolutely describe the four of us. We did buy a grain elevator, but your comments are fair. It is absolutely something that we thought of, and we actually have met with our architects and kind of done some research on what it would take to vent those systems. There are things called a snorkel that help vent some of the exhausted or exhaust. In addition, we could probably set it up so that we could provide the power that they need so they don't have to run the generators inside. So these are all things that we're already thinking, we're kind of, we started already looking at what are the potential setbacks or challenges, and that's certainly one of them. And we're already in motion on investigating how we would handle those. And by early guidance of our architects, they're telling us that we absolutely could do this.
So I guess going back to the questions I've asked everybody, so how would you actually use the catering part of your license?
So I think there are some really fun opportunities there. I also think that it would be a complementary aspect of our business. So it's not that we wouldn't use the catering personally, but I also think it promotes some awesome opportunities to partner with some of our other local businesses, even on campus. We have a current tenant who's talked about an event space, interesting and hosting, you know, art and events that would need catered alcohol and food. So I think that we also, being in the West Edge, and there are many events that happen over there. Edge Fest is one of our favorites. I think we would love to play a part in some of that and be an active, play an active role. So that would be another opportunity. I think it's fair to say that some of this will take shape. Mr. Rennie, you said earlier, one of your questions to an earlier applicant was, how do you know, how do you know what you're going to do if you don't have the license? And that's a fair question. So we have done as much possible work as we can do up to this point, invested our personal time, our financial investment, and are ready and standing poised so that when we do receive the liquor license, we can move forward with gusto.
Then my second question, kind of relating just to your screen chat show, as far as your liquor store goes, what is your annual projection for alcohol sales?
So that is covered, I believe it's on page nine. I did some of the rough math. So based on our square footage of the liquor store alone, we averaged, we said that given the size and location of our liquor store, the estimated total sales would range from three hundred seventy-five square foot to five hundred fifty dollars a square foot. For purposes of our analysis, we used the five hundred fifty a square foot, doing part to the anticipated higher price points for premium beer and liquor. So that would put our package revenue at approximately two hundred ten to three hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Okay, and then would your employees have health insurance and 401K benefits?
Yes, I think that, so we are looking at approximately ten to twelve employees from the start. Obviously, that has room to grow. The four of us are already small business owners and very versed in setting up those employment benefits. And so, absolutely.
And then what would be your hours of operation?
We submitted a seven days a week, eleven to eleven, and I think that that will take shape as well because some of that will be packaged liquor store and also as well as the grain elevator space and the family gathering space.
All right, and then I guess as far as like trends go, that's why I was apprehensive and things like that, that if the trend moves on, like do you have a backup plan as far as like what you would plan in the future if it doesn't pan out?
I'm not sure I understand the question if what does it pan out to?
So basically with trends the way they are, like right now food trucks, well, for the last ten years, they've been really hot. Then all of a sudden the dynamic changes. I guess I'm just looking for as far as the fluidity of your business model, that if things didn't pan out, like say with the food trucks and things like that, like, you know, do you have any backup plans? Like, would there be potential to actually put in a, you know, a retail kitchen? If you realize that some of your space was, you know, open where those trucks were and/or one of the outside areas? Because, you know, basically the way I understood state statute is it was always under one address, and this is how Sam did provisions, because he basically owned that entire lot. And so if you were to have this all as under one address and do what you had as your gazebo or outside tart part there that could maybe accommodate a kitchen or something like that, you know, is this other items that you've looked for, or is everything pretty much stationary that you know that you want to take on just the food trucks inside and no potential in the future?
I'm glad you asked that question. We actually, due to time limitation, had to skip one of the most important slides, I think. And it was, it referred to the development of some of the other properties on our campus. The Mini Vic, if you look at this, it's going to show you some pictures. Oh, it's not sharing. But we absolutely have considered the flexibility of a model that would include moving a commercial kitchen to another building on our property, absolutely. The other thing that I think is important to point out is that our business model does not rely on income from the food trucks. In fact, our business model is based purely on the full-service permanent bar and family gathering space, as well as the packaged liquor. The food truck partner would be a partnership with the food trucks. And so as far as the revenue, we are not relying on the revenue that they bring in. Obviously, it's a mutually beneficial opportunity if they're able to come in and do their business within our business. But I think it's important to say that if for some reason food trucks and that trend were to move on, I think we're poised to investigate several different options. If you, I think she's got it up for you. This is our Mini Vic. It's a little eighteen hundreds Victorian house. It was one of the first ones built in the neighborhood. And we have been playing with the idea of turning it into a chic wine bar that offers, you know, small eats and desserts. And as you can see, there's the pergola space that you just referenced, Councilman Johnson. There's a little, a small layout and some little evidence to see what it would look like, and that's its relation to the elevator. So I think we're very fortunate to have some flexibility. And if we had to take a left turn or a Plan B, I think we're poised and ready to do that.
Mr. Johnson, any follow-up questions? Any questions in committee? Mr. Escobar?
Yes, I would ask you the same question that I posed to one of the earlier applicants. Because it's hypothetical that had we been able to go back in time and look at past applicants and those businesses weren't as successful as we wanted them to be, and obviously as successful as they wanted them to be. And then we ended up with the situation where it was, the license was sold to the highest bidder. So the question would be, what do you think if we had a system where if you couldn't use the license anymore, you had to sell it back to the city? Of course, for the same price that we sold it to you for?
Sure, I think I think that's a bigger conversation, but it's a fair question. I think I would answer that in saying that, of course, the city is going to sell it to us at a much lower value than what you're going to buy it in the secondary market. But we're going to take that license and we're going to invest our hard-earned money and our time and create a business behind it. So I think, I think it's fair to say that it would encourage a conversation. But I would hate to say to give up, to throw up our hands and say, we can't do this and we're done. But I also would point out that the four of us aren't just doing this. I think that we could demonstrate that we are small business owners in the city of Cheyenne. We run several successful small businesses in the city of Cheyenne. And so I think we're prepared to make this happen. A lot of people ask us about the question of ROI, what do you plan to make off of this? And quite frankly, to us, honestly, the ROI is an investment in Cheyenne. I grew up here. My husband and I grew up here. He's a medical professional in the community, as is Dr. Rose. We left Cheyenne as young people because there was a lack of amenities keeping young professionals and young people here in Cheyenne. And so we all moved back, and we were fortunate enough to meet the roses and found that we had a very like belief that if we build it, they will come. Like we truly, this is an investment in Cheyenne for us. I think we've demonstrated that with blossom yoga studio and Hammock Fine Art. We've invested to try to bring in local partnerships with businesses, so I know that was a roundabout answer, but I hope I answered your question.
Well, you did, and Mr. President, my follow-up would be though that otherwise, if that were the case, then we'd have eleven licenses we could, you know, use for economic development. And otherwise, be in a system where we're picking winners and losers, and you all are winners. You all deserve it.
I agree with that.
I've made many hard decisions in my career, and this is probably going to be one of the hardest.
Okay, any further comments or questions for committee? Mr. Cook?
So you had mentioned, I just, I want to be clear through you, Mr. Chair. So is it the lack of a plan for full-service kitchen, is it just not architecturally feasible?
Exactly.
In that building? So you'd have to potentially expand that building if you wanted in the elevator building? I mean, you'd have to take up, it looks like would be probably the north end of the building.
Sure.
Or the space north to the building?
Sure.
So it's just not economically feasible or cost feasible to do that?
Yes, yes, Councilman. I believe that, so our footprint is kind of prevents that truly. And also because one of our priorities is to preserve this old building, that if we actually had to kind of take a chunk out of it to create a commercial kitchen, to us, we're taking away what really the Old Cheyenne Elevator offers our guests in the first place. So it really isn't an ideal concept. But I also think that it hearkens back to Councilman Johnson's question about if we had to get creative, if the food truck trend doesn't last, and we have to look at having a commercial kitchen that could support that property on campus, I think that we're poised to do that.
Mr. Johnson?
This is came to me. Several of the neighbors that are already in that area have talked about This has came to me. Several of the neighbors that are already in that area have talked about parking. And so if you're going to bring in multiple people, it doesn't look like there's much for parking except for on-street. And so if the neighbors are already frustrated with the current parking situation as it is, where are we going to? Because unfortunately, I would love it if everybody rode bicycles and walked, you know, to this area. But unfortunately, that's not the case in most of Cheyenne. And so I'm just wondering where the additional vehicles are going to go, or if it's just going to be on-street?
No, I think that's a great question. We've had some early conversations with the planning department. I know that there's some work in an overlay for parking in the West Edge specifically. The street is potentially ripe for possibility for the on-street parking that's existent, which is now, I believe, parallel, could be turned to diagonal, which would increase that. But we also already have some partnerships with some of our local neighbors that allow our guests to use their lots. And we would continue to work through those scenarios. We're also hopeful that the Reed Avenue corridor will continue to move forward. And I know that that particular plan also has some parking considerations in it, especially right near our building. And so I think that some of that's in motion, and it's a fair question, and it's absolutely something that we've thought of. You mentioned that, you asked about our neighbors maybe worried about parking. Is that something? Okay, that's not something that we have necessarily heard directly for a property, but certainly we work very hard to be a good neighbor as well. So we would partner with everybody to try to, to work something out as well as work with the city and some of the new developments.
Any further questions or comments from committee? Dr. Aldridge?
I did not have any, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thing is, there is no further business in front of the committee, the whole, or excuse me, the council work session. We're adjourned. Sorry.